Everyone, to our Human Resources Personnel Changes Meeting, November 28, 2022, and it's 10:01 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Filios, and Duncan. Are there any changes to the agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll get right into it. Number one for our business portion of the agenda is request to accelerate date approved for new jail sergeant position. And I think Captain Miller is going to talk to this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Stu Miller for the record, yes. So we were approved by the board to add an additional sergeant's position is effective April of this year by converting two positions that have gone unfilled for a long time into that position. We find ourselves at a kind of an interesting quandary right now, though. We've got a sergeant that's retiring out of our warrants and transport section February the 16th, and it's a complex position that requires some additional training. I just can't promote a new sergeant and put him into that position. So we are requesting to accelerate our sergeant's position from April to begin the third effective pay period three, which would be January 15th of this year. And I know Brandy did some calculations. I got them this morning and shows FY '23 increase at 3605. And then depending on how she wrote it, if the positions were funded at 100%, it'd be a savings of $12,936. If they were converted positions at 50%, it would be an increase of $37,201 for FY '24. So my hope is, is that we can get this person promoted soon, and then I can start the transition of the other sergeant that's going to warrants and transport to get his training going before February 16th, so that when that sergeant leaves, I actually have somebody that's a functional sergeant in that position.
When does he leave?
February 16th is his final day. And he's already turned in a retirement letter.
So this position would start one month before that?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any questions? Okay. All right, so again, I'll just kind of point out that had all the positions been funded at 100%, that this would have been a $13,000 savings. So, but because they were funded at 50%, we're looking at a $37,000 increase for FY '24, depending on if we were doing any decreases, any half-funding. I guess I'll say that. So, all right, well, no other questions, I would take a motion and mentioning pay period three, January 15th.
I move that we approve the request for accelerated date approval for an in-jail sergeant position for TCSO.
Did you want the pay period indicated?
Yeah, it has to be in the motion.
I will second and add that this is effective to pay period three.
Starting pay period three, thank you.
Commissioner Filios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. Item two, this is a request for distribution of annual service awards with Parks and Waterways. And Nick, you're on the line.
Yes, good morning Commissioners, Nick's there for the record. Indeed, before you is our annual employee service awards in the amount of $150 for each of the nine employees in the department that have performed exceptionally well in 2022, and it is memorialized in our current budget, and so we seek your authorization to distribute those funds on pay period 25 or December 8th.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
All right, take a motion.
December 3rd, okay.
I will move therefore that with regard to our Parks and Waterways organization, that we authorize the distribution of the annual service awards to be effective, to be paid on December 8th, which is pay period 25.
Go ahead.
You done?
Yes.
Let's second the motion.
Commissioner Filios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye, motion passes, thank you, Nick. All right, item three, a request for hiring bonuses, juvenile detention, and we have our juvenile detention director, Linda Haas, here. And just to remind people that we had, already had done the hiring bonuses in the past, so if you want to remind us.
Linda Haas for the record.
Your microphone, thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, Linda Haas for the record. Yes, we are requesting a $1,000 hiring bonus. We currently have five open positions, four of those have been open throughout this fiscal year, and that made a significant difference for us last year in our hiring. We've had very few applications so far this year.
All right, and the funding will come from the salary savings?
Correct, it'd be budget neutral.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope, no concerns on my part.
All right, Phil? All right, motion please.
I move that we approve the request for hiring bonuses for juvenile detention.
Second.
Commissioner Filios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye, all right, motion passes. And item four, succession plan. So twice in one year, in 12 months' period of time, our juvenile detention will have a new director, so I'm not sure if you want to lead this or if you want me to lead this.
Either way, I am retiring on May 1st.
Okay.
So I have a recommendation for the board, and I'm open to discussing that, somebody that's been with the county for an extended period of time.
Okay, and we actually did discuss this in executive session. Yep, so I think we're comfortable, so we can go ahead and say his name and make, and make the motion that he will succeed her on starting May 1st?
Correct.
Because you're April 30th?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so go ahead.
Yes, I'm recommending Eric Sheffield. He's been with the county for over 25 years, working at detention, started off as a line staff and moved his way up, so he's currently the assistant director.
Okay, the one thing I don't have is the pay matrix in front of me, so Sylvia, did you have a suggested step starting?
No, I don't.
Your microphone.
I don't have a recommendation. I could work with Linda, and we could bring that back.
Sure.
And look at his pay and where we are now.
Okay, yeah, let's, I would prefer to, to, yeah, but to get it solid today that he will be a replacement, and then we'll address the compensation, which unfortunately I didn't think of last week.
Neither did I, sorry.
That's okay. So we can address that in a future HR meeting, but I think for your staff's peace of mind, that we would go ahead and approve the succession plan at this point. So, any questions?
No.
All right, motion please.
I move that we approve the appointment of Mr. Eric Sheffield, who is currently our assistant director at juvenile detention, to assume the position of director as recommended by our current director, Linda Haas, and the specifics as to the, any potential overlap with salary to be determined. End of motion.
I would just add, I would just add starting May 1st, 2023. That's the only thing I would add.
Commissioner Filios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye, thank you very much, motion passes. Thank you, Linda. All right, item number five, request for position overlap, and this is considered specialty court, but it is a judge position, so Carlene, did you want to start us off?
Sure, I'll start with the overlap first. The current judicial staff attorney will be stepping down, and then we are here today also to ask that a new judicial staff attorney be hired. So what we would like to do is, we would like to have the new staff attorney come on and work with the current staff attorney from December 19th until January 16th, and then the current one will leave her employment with the county.
Carlene, is this length of overlap particularly, I mean, I just haven't seen such an extensive overlap before. Is there a reason why, you know, two weeks or three weeks wouldn't suffice? And I think, go ahead.
I'm sorry. No, I'd like to defer to Mr. McHugh.
Sure.
Is Barry on?
Yeah.
I am on. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Good morning. A couple things that play into the lengthy overlap. One of it is frankly that the staff attorney is going to be working with a brand-new district judge, being me, and if this, if I was an experienced district judge who would have that, you know, background to be able to sort of mentor appropriately a new staff attorney in terms of the tasks, that would be a different story, but frankly, I'm coming into the job, you know, granted with a certain level of experience in different positions, but brand-new to district judge position. So in a way, the judicial staff attorney is going to play an important role in assisting me and getting ready, and it will both, the overlap will both assist the new staff attorney even before I take over in January, but then also be able to provide me with some guidance as well after January 3rd, when I will be sworn in and start the position. So the overlap is in some regard based on my situation and then also the, kind of the existing caseload. There's also a civil trial that is going to be, as I understand it, starting in January or first part of February, that the existing staff attorney would have the expertise to get the case ready for me to, you know, clearly understand how things go. I've had some civil experience, but again, having that foundational work with the existing staff attorney would be very helpful.
Questions for Barry?
No, I think I understand.
Okay. I'm still not comfortable with the six-week overlap. I think that's excessive. I appreciate Barry's, you know, explanation and everything, so, you know, whatever you guys decide to do, I'm just, probably four weeks in this situation. There's using salary savings to do this, so I think four weeks would be, I don't know.
Barry, would that work for you?
Well, as I understood what Carlene said, the current staff attorney will be working up until the 16th. Carlene, did I misunderstand that?
No, that's correct, December 19th to January 16th.
Okay, so.
So those four weeks.
May I, this is Brandy Falcon for the record, the memo that I received from Sam Wallace said until February 2nd as the overlap, so that's what I did the calculations on, from 12, December 19th to February 2nd. So my numbers are based on that, not a January 16th overlap.
And Commissioners, now that, that refreshes my memory a little bit, but my understanding is that the current staff attorney will be taking two weeks of vacation, and so I'm going to kind of back up and correct myself, because that refreshes, I think it would be till February 2nd, so, you know, whatever the board decides is appropriate.
So Barry, the two weeks vacation are going to be taken within that six-week timeframe? Is that it?
That's correct.
That's right.
Yeah, so I see what's happening, is they want that, the money would be six weeks, but the actual in-seat time is only four weeks, so.
Right. And right now I have $15,322 in seasonal salaries utilized.
How much was that again, Carlene? Sorry.
I haven't used any of it yet.
Okay.
And how is that available? Is that salary savings or?
That's what she said.
That's in line item 7005 for temporary and seasonal employees.
Go ahead, Brandy, I guess.
Overall salary savings are $85,000. I don't go into the individual line item.
Oh, okay.
Right, but I think Carlene was asking maybe, Carlene, correct me if I'm wrong, you wanted to come out of the seasonal and temporary?
It won't work that way for payroll. It's going to come out of the regular line item, and the overage will be absorbed by the other line item.
Gotcha.
Because to me, they don't spend it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's right.
That $16,000 is just part of their overall salary savings.
I guess it's a four-week overlap.
Yeah. I'm fine with it. If it were truly six weeks of productive time, I think I'd opt for the four-week overlap, but because we're losing two weeks, I think I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right, motion?
Is it my turn?
Sure, maybe not, it doesn't matter.
Okay, so I will move that with regard to specialty court, that we approve the position overlap for the attorneys in question from the period of December 19th through February's, December 19th of this year through February 2nd of 2023. End of motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Filios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Just want to make sure, though, that we're actually approving it through February 16th, the 2nd, so.
The 2nd.
Because she's leaving two weeks prior to that, not two weeks after that. Okay, aye. Okay, we're good. All right, item six, this is a request.
Can I just interrupt for a moment? I'm sorry, we still need to talk about the hiring of the judicial, the new judicial staff attorney and her salary.
That's what we're talking about, item six, request to hire above the 97% of market per policy 120. So Carlene, did you want to lead this one?
I could lead it, or Mr. McHugh could lead it. We're requesting a judicial, the new judicial staff attorney position for District Judge Alex McHugh at Step 10. The applicant has 17 years of experience as a practicing attorney, and, you know, it'd be very beneficial to hire her and have her, you know, begin work with Judge McHugh.
All right, you know, understanding what the, the person's experience, understanding the overlap and all that situation, I probably am more comfortable with a step six due to, and we can go into executive session if you want to speak on specific, the experience is not 100% one-for-one. The more than one application was received for that position, and there is no ongoing funding source to make such a high jump, and it's highly, highly irregular to, to hire somebody at such a huge step, so that's my thoughts on it.
So you would be comfortable with a level of six?
Yes.
Step six?
Yeah.
What does that mean in terms of dollars?
Um.
In other words, in terms of the wage?
I can pull that. All right, an ATP, it's considered an attorney level one. At a step six, their annual salary is $78,291.20. At a step 10, it's $85,342.40.
At a step 10?
Uh huh.
And Leslie, you're suggesting a step six?
Yes.
And is that the 78, 291, Sylvia?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's a $7,000.
A $7,000 spread. I guess, anybody have any comments?
I'd be, I'd be in agreement with a step six.
Okay. What's that?
I mean, not knowing anymore in terms of how difficult is it to, you know, hire for this, in this capacity, I don't, I would go with the step six, but I'm not hearing any opposition to your suggestion, so.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion for a step six.
Well, Commissioners, can I, can I weigh in?
Yeah.
This is Barry McHugh again for the record. So in, just in terms of Commissioner Filios's comment, there were, I want to say, five applicants for the position, two of whom withdrew in light of salary and, you know, cost of living type of considerations after I communicated with them. One was, if my memory is correct, someone who was not even eligible to start work. And so there was very, you know, somewhat limited application pool, and it's, I understand it's very unusual to have somebody with this kind of experience, but again, my, my experience with hiring attorneys in the prosecuting attorney's office would indicate that out-of-state experience is considered, you know, one-to-one per the policy, and that's been my understanding with HR as well. Obviously, I wasn't going to ask the board, have, have Carlene ask the board for a 14, because I know the board doesn't do that, and so discounting years of experience to a step 10 was my thinking at the time that I made the request to Carlene to forward to the board. And she does have some experience as, I want to say sort of a, in a way as like a magistrate judge in federal court, where she has worked for a judge who did family law matters, and she was sort of a hearing officer. So there's some kind of above-the-norm type of experience as a, sort of a practicing quasi-judicial position, and so, you know, all of that contributed to the reasoning behind the recommendation. And so that's probably the additional information I would ask the board to consider. Thank you.
I appreciate always when lawyers bring things forward. I'm, I'm still kind of at the same amount. I do understand, you know, Barry's position and his reasoning, but I'm, I'm kind of stuck at a six.
Sylvia, is there a compromise between these two figures or steps?
Well, yeah, you have the ability to go anywhere from that initial 10 to anywhere in between to the six that's recommended by Leslie, it's the board's discretion from here.
I mean, is there an eight?
Yes, we do have an eight, and that would be $81,432.
So that's, essentially takes us halfway. Feel any better?
I'd be comfortable with an eight and leave it at that, you know.
I'm good with a six, but, you know, two out of three. So just give me a motion.
Go ahead, Bill.
Chris, I'd rather.
You want me to do it?
Yeah, I've got a bid.
Okay, so with regard to the hiring for specialty court for the attorney in question here, I move that we approve the position and the hiring of the individual as prescribed by incoming Judge Barry McHugh, District Judge Barry McHugh, at a step eight and the wage to be $81,432. And when does this begin?
December 19th.
December 19th of?
December 19th.
Yep.
December 19th of this year, end of motion.
I second the motion, and I, I'm having a little trouble because I had a hearing aide that died, so I'm hearing some of what's going on and.
Okay.
Commissioner Filios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Nay. Motion passes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Barry.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We have to do that.
Thank you.
All right, item seven, this is an executive session, Idaho Code 74206-1D to examine records that are not public records. So I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session at this point.
I can do that. I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206-1D.
Second.
Commissioner Filios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye, thank you very much, and now.